Amendment under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Brian Robertson.
Here.
Lindsey Wassman. Roger Faust. Chad Lake.
Here.
First we need to amend the agenda under new business. Section D, two members of the reorganization. We need to remove that as we are not ready for that yet. I will make a motion to amend the agenda to remove that item.
Second. Brian.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
All right, public comment concerns. Please limit your comments and concerns to five minutes. Anyone that would like to speak, please come to the podium. No one? All right, well, we'll move on. Presentations. We have no presentations. New business, Commonwealth. Got Amendment number four. Does everybody hear me?
I have to speak loud.
It's always a problem. Um, is that better? A little bit, I can hear you fine.
So, we have two items to present to you tonight. One is a contract amendment. This is specifically for construction services for the Phase Two project. Construction inspection during that phase of the project. This just moves around some of the other funds and adds a little bit to account for all those services throughout construction. This amendment amount would be in the total of maybe $1,000. In addition to that, there are funds that are going to be utilized for the wells. We've had some previous discussions with Terry about retesting some of the existing wells at the water treatment plant. So, we have some quotes in with Oregon right now to camera and retest those wells to see if they can provide capacity. I know at previous council meetings, there's discussion about wells and what I consider about how much water main would be needed. So, this might be a viable alternative that the Dan and CDS could actually utilize once we have those results. Second item would be an asset management program certification form. So, as part of the SRF program, this essentially is a certifying statement for the town. And as part of the SRF funding program that you will have and maintain an asset management plan as part of the agreement to the funding. And this is just to formalize that. Are there any questions for me or any concern?
Amendment and additional money. That is the cover, additional timeline to wait to complete the water main project.
Yes.
For the engineering services.
Yes.
I'm going to the council, any questions? Is this all under Amendment number four?
Yes, that is correct.
I'll entertain a motion for accept Amendment number four in the amount of $81,000.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
No.
Does the SRF thing we voted on?
Certification. I entertain a motion to accept the state revolving fund loan program asset management.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
How much is it?
Do you know that off the top of your head, Riley?
No, there is no.
Brian.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
That all you got for us, Riley?
That'll be it.
Thank you. Next up, we Crown and Associates. There are two proposals tonight for the reorganization of LaPelle and Sony Creek Township.
Thank you. In record, my name is Buzz Chrome, executive partner and over the Crown Associates. With me is Michelle Davis, who we met last time. We handed out what I think lays out sort of the overview of what you're embarking upon and sort of the process that needs to take place. And then more specifically, what scope of services we would have declared in regards to the preparation of the fiscal impact analysis, which is a required document for the reorganization. Obviously, the two bodies, which would be Sony Township and the Town Council, would need to come to an agreement on what the level of services to be provided in what we'll call the new town, being the reorganized town. But there, we would still refer to the existing town of LaPelle, sort of the old town. And then the rural area to come in with the rural district. It's sort of the nomenclature that we've used in describing the distinction between what level of service you're going to provide to the outside of the old town area. Obviously, the county roads and so forth are a big issue. And we probably need to consider interlocal agreement with the county also to see to what extent they would still participate in snow removal, road maintenance, things of that nature, if at all. And if not, that would become a burden of the new town, obviously. But again, there'd be identical resolutions that would need to be adopted. That would include a formal reorganizational plan. And again, the fiscal impact is obviously an important component of that plan because you'll need to have public hearings, at least two public hearings before, at least three months, I believe, before it goes to a referendum. And the people are going to be interested, well, what does that do to my property tax bill? What does that do to my property tax rate? You'll be interested to see what revenues you're going to have to work with and to what extent there hopefully are savings by the reorganization with the administrative functions that would be consolidated. But then again, I think, you know, to the extent police and fire are going to be covering all of Sony Township, that's a big issue for the town to consider. And with the county commissioners and the sheriff, you know, are they still going to be able to rely on their support for public safety in the rural district, if you will? You're probably first responder already, I would imagine, in a lot of the cases with the police and fire. The plan of the reorganization is really the heavy lifting that the council and the trustee board would have to go through to identify exactly, you know, what service can be anticipated in the rural district versus the town, the old town, and what tax rates you carry forward. Debt is a big issue. If you've issued debt from a town standpoint, the old town needs to support that debt. Just like if the township has its own debt, the rural district would, unless it's already something that's being paid by the town. But if the township were to have its own debt, that's something that those folks would be responsible for going forward. The primary areas of the reorganization plan obviously include administrative services. The township board would sort of cease to exist. And there would be an expanded town council. They would probably go from your current levels, five to up to seven would be my guess is how that would work out. Public safety and police and fire is a big issue for the reorganization plan. Road improvements, snow removal, grading and maintenance of the roads and streets, that's a big issue. And whether or not the county must still support those, you know, that activity. Cemetery maintenance is another issue, weed control, township assistance. And then obviously, utility services. I believe you're probably already in the driver's seat seeing in that regard. I need an interlocal agreement between the township board, the town, and hopefully the county commissioners, to the extent that they're going to continue to support activities in the rural district. The, you know, basically, the purpose of the fiscal impact is to identify the estimated financial impact of the reorganization on the taxpayers in the town, township, and what are the tax rates expected to be? What are the expenditures anticipated to be? And again, the service level and annual debt payments. Those are sort of the big issues in terms of whether, to what extent the rates would be differentiated. Description of the plan, services to the new town, methods of financing those services, itemized estimate costage department, and a description of capital improvements to be provided by the new town, and the method or methods of financing those capital fees. Any estimated effects on the political subdivisions in Madison County that are not participating in the reorganization and on taxpayers located in those political subdivisions is also at issue. Our scope of services would include analyzing the budgeted expenditures. I think we can probably look forward to the page 26 budget year as adjusted for anticipated changes that might come about that through the reorganization. We would look at the former ones that are in your 2026 budgets that have presumably already been filed with DLGF. And have you received your 1782 notice yet? Okay, so you already have that from this company. So, I knew some of those had come out already, but not everybody. Again, analyzing the outstanding debt between the town and the township and how the reorganization plan would address those responsibilities. Analysis of the cash balances at the end of this year and at the estimated end of next year as projected in your 1782 budget notices. Analysis of anticipated revenue, again, based on what's in the 2026 1782 budget notices. And at that point, that calculation of estimated tax levies, tax rates, and the new town, for the new town based on the budgeted expenditure and revenues. We would also look at the potential impact that Senate Rollback One would have on assessed values, property tax rate, and potential circuit breaker or tax cap losses. So, that is sort of a broad overview of the process that we see, the scope of work that we would be looking at providing. I think it's important to know the heavy lifting is really going to rest with the town board and the township board in coming up with, agreeing on what services are going to be offered that the town currently doesn't provide out there and what ones won't be offered. So, that's probably the heavy lifting part of the thing. Once that gets worked out and, you know, we'll crunch the numbers different ways to help you analyze those variables as they come up. That's in a nutshell. We put in an estimated fee range of $25,000 to $40,000. Again, that's sort of an estimate. A lot of times you get into these kind of things, you don't really know what you're getting into. But we feel like that's a pretty broad range that hopefully we can all live within. At that point, I'll ask for any questions you might have.
Do you have an estimated timeline? Because we have, we're going to have a crunch timeline on this, try to get it done before the cutoff for the November election.
Yeah, I don't see that as a problem. I think, you know, the big issue is going to be coming up with what services are going to be offered inside and out. But I think, you know, 60 days would be a good timeline for us to get our, you know, baseline financial information together. And then after that, we can look at various projections of, you know, what those services are going to be and how much it's anticipated to cost. So, I would say, you know, hopefully, it could all be completed within six months, you know, before you have to do your budget for '27. That'd be my thought and estimate there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Brandon Robbins for Reedy Financial Group. I'm one of the owners there, or partners. Some of you guys I've worked with for the last two years on this fire territory expansion and kind of did through the trenches on that. Fortunately, we were able to get it through with the legislation change kind of happening in the 11th hour there. So, I think Buzz did a really good job of talking about the description and the outline of what would happen. And I totally agree that a lot of the heavy lifting in our experience has been in how you guys want to structure it. As far as the financial analysis goes, I'll just kind of briefly talk about our process and some of the things we can bring to the table with our team. Kind of starting with the fire protection territory analysis, going back to the time that we spent on that allowed us to really get a good fundamental understanding of where your budgets currently are, your local income tax structures, circuit breaker structures, levies. So, we really obviously have a good understanding among this community, the township, and all the other units that we serve in that. So, you know, our company currently helps out on some other financial advisory roles for the town. I think Vicki was on an RBC call just an hour ago here. So, the big thing I would say in understanding how we would approach the process, when we think about things like SCA One that just got passed and kind of dropped on everybody, one thing our company's done is really been on the forefront of that. So, we've partnered with AIM and even other financial consultants in this space to really provide a foundation of understanding for what it's going to do to communities. I think a lot of it's really been pointed at, you know, the obvious taxpayer side in our communities that we serve are unaware of really what the implications are. And through doing that, the reason why I brought it up, is we've developed a parcel level analysis. So, we've actually obtained every single parcel of land in the state of Indiana, and we've broken it down by every single county and every single unit. So, we have the ability to be really efficient in putting that parcel level together. And I think inside of the reorganization process, you really got to take a look at every single parcel and then combine this geographical area. And then that way, you can get as minute as every individual taxpayer and all the way up to the impacts on every single unit that are going to be a part of this or impacted by this. So, with that, I mean, that really takes care of kind of the property tax side, but then you also have the local income tax side. And in the SCA One piece, we've modeled that as well for what it's going to look like in 2028. And the big thing I think about in doing a reorganization today, a lot of stuff's changing, right? So, in 2026, we're seeing the first phase of the new fire territory phase in. We're going to have a three-year phase in of that. So, our modeling is going to give us a baseline based on parcel information. And then each year, we'll implement the new tax rates based on the fire territory restructuring because we know that's going to scale up. We have all the assessed value growth data trends. We'll have all that built in, circuit breaker. And then ultimately get to that bigger obstacle of when we hit 2028, we're going to see local income tax reform. So, all of that would be integrated into this model. So, I guess, in this case, it's not really reinventing the wheel. We kind of have the baseline established. We're going to do much of the same, you know, process and working with you guys. I think what that efficiency allows us to do is spend more time with you guys and really understanding what you want this governmental unit to look like. Because in this modeling, you guys know, I mean, for the folks that were part of that territory, the first option was the 50th, you know, we had 50 different changes in that thing, you know? So, we want to schedule it and set it up to where if you have changes and you want to see different ways of looking at it, we can do that. You know, Buzz mentioned the rule in urban areas. There's different ways you can structure the tax rates inside of a reorganization. So, and every time we do that, it changes every single other piece of it, not only for your taxpayers, but also for the units of government that are impacted by it. So, that's kind of a, in a nutshell, some of the efficiencies we'll be able to bring to the table with that. Our process will start with that parcel level data, working with you guys to come up with the direction you want to go on the tax structuring for the rule in urban areas. Kind of giving you guys some insight on either the benefit or the detriment to the taxpayer, and then ultimately all the way up to the top, kind of the modeling you guys saw on the territory stuff for the overlapping units and what that looks like. As I recall, we've been involved in these before, but the DLGF requires a three-year look forward. So, a lot of things are going to change in that three years. Likely, what we would probably do is want to look at it for like a five-year period. So, you can kind of get to some normalcy maybe after that three years. So, that's kind of what we're proposing. I've got a detailed breakdown inside of that. If you'd like me to go through it, I'd be happy to. Our initial fee structure, and just that way, everybody's kind of on the same page. We've got a $20,000 not to exceed. That's to build the fiscal analysis and to meet with you guys on the final approach to that. And then from there, if there's a bunch of additional meetings, it would just be a reality. We kind of recognized during the fire protection territory piece, it wasn't just two or three public meetings. It was, ended up being five public meetings and probably 15, you know, side meetings. And our hourly rates are broken down in there, and they would be on the lower end of that range for that just that time. So, lower to mid-range. So, I don't need to go into any more detail on the other steps. I think Buzz did a good job on that. So, if you have any questions for us, I think you asked timeline on him. I mean, we have the database pretty much ready to roll out with the current, the 25 parcel data that's available. And we can get started on it fairly quickly. I think we could get like an initial model out pretty fast here. Depends on how fast you guys want to move. We can be pretty flexible there. So, even if we wanted to do it before the holidays, we could possibly get you a draft. But like, you know, we'll probably need to move into next year, make sure nothing changes with the budgets, especially with your overlapping units as well. Maybe they have modifications to their budgets that affect those tax rates for '26. So, that'd be a good baseline year for budgets, but we could get it done pretty early next year. And then definitely it's time for changes and stuff if you guys see fit there.
Jeff, does that fit in our timeline?
Every day, every day's important on this. We, as soon as we can make the decision, we should.
Do they make a decision on this tonight, vote on it?
Right, we can, because it's certainly permissible to. Or you can chew on what you've heard and come back and do it either as a, it would probably need to be at a special meeting prior to your December meeting, you know, early next week. Or you could continue this meeting to a date and time certain and come back and make that decision with it. Then you wouldn't have to renotice.
Any comments from the rest of the council?
The process is laid out by the state. So, we, you know, we need the vendor that's going to be able to get us the information quick enough that we can follow the timeline that's laid out for us and that can get it done. So, our burden on this is to the taxpayers, to be able to inform them how this is going to work and so that they can vote appropriately in November on what they want to do.
How much money were we talking about?
Reedy's, is that not to exceed 20,000. Chrome's is a $25,000 to $40,000 estimate.
Potentially 60,000?
No, this is one or the other.
One or the other. I would entertain a motion to accept one of the proposals.
I would make a motion to accept a proposal from Reedy Financial.
Brian.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
I thank both of you for presenting tonight. My opinion was just, I think they're both great companies. Timeline was the biggest thing to me. Now, we're moving on to resignation letter from a BZA member. His term is ending, the end of this year. And Tim Monroe does not want to continue, so there will be an opening on the BZA.
So, he's staying on for the remainder of his term?
Yes, he's staying on until December 31st. What's the BZA? Board of Zoning Appeals.
What's the process if somebody wants to apply?
Send, uh, let's see. Level of intent to, it's. Info at LaPelle, Indiana. Now, we have the proposal from Dependable Tree Service to remove a tree and some stumps. Yes, please.
This was Gary saying that he's not here, but I was with him. So, there, we have a tree down on Central.
424.
Yeah, 424 Central Avenue. It's pretty dead and leaning towards somebody's house. So, we're wanting to get that out of there. And then if you guys remember all the trees that we took out last fall, we need to get those stumps out. The reason there was one added on at the end, he had to get a price for that one because we forgot about the one in front of August Stephanie Turner's house.
That's the 124 West 10th Street?
Yes.
Okay. These are all in the right way?
Yes.
Town responsibility?
Yes.
Are we able to add another stump issue, my chance? It was stumped by Daybreak.
Are we able to add another stump issue, my chance? There's a stump by Daybreak Church out by the sidewalk.
Okay.
Might be two there actually.
Do you happen to know which road it's on?
School Street, I believe.
Yeah, we will look into those.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion to accept Dependable Tree Services proposal of $4,200 to remove the tree and the stumps.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposal.
I'll say it. Chad.
Brian?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Okay, CDS Engineers, gas sale and water update.
Good evening. Dan Cutshaw with CDS Engineers. The gas sale, I believe, I talked to Jeff earlier than tonight, the asset purchase agreement's all good. It does need to be approved by the town council. This is the sale to Citizens Energy Group for the gas utility. The IURC will probably hear it sometime in February or March. So it is moving forward, but we do need to get the APA approval by the town council.
Is that, that's not up for tonight, is it?
How soon does that need to be done?
For the IURC, you're
So we could do it this summer?
You could do it this summer.
Okay.
All right, water update. I might let you know what we've done to date. So we flushed the water system. Brandon's done a good job with that. We're going to look at some additional valves in the system, and that's, that's upcoming. The, we all met with Brockway a couple of different times, three times, I think. And we have limited their water usage. They've gone way, way down. And I'll say they've been very, very cooperative in that. They've called us a couple of different times. We know they're talking with Brandon quite a bit. The elevated water tank is been cleaned, painted, and it's back in service. So we did get some iron in the bottom of that tank removed, remains removed. It's very clean. It's been pressure washed. It's back in service. As I mentioned before, we should plan to reevaluate that in, in a couple of years. The Ford Street well has been cleaned. Capacity was increased from about 160 gallons per minute to about 270 gallons per minute. We do have, we've tested per IDMA regulations on everything, including manganese, PFOS. Both manganese and PFOS have passed. So those are good. Items that we've got coming up, the 113 wells are going to be cleaned, I think the week after Thanksgiving. That's still pending, but I believe that's scheduled at this point.
Weather?
Weather dependent, scheduled, peerless Midwest. That was the, when we met him out there, Brian, that was the plan. We kind of wanted to do it before, but we were waiting on that tank to be backed up. So it's going to be after Thanksgiving. We've got, we're going to evaluate the filter media plant, backwash procedures. That's upcoming. We're going to also clean the clear well for a treatment plant. And we're going to meet probably in the next, before the next council meeting in December, talk about water main replacement, systematic process and program. So that's about it. If you may have any questions, Chad?
For the gas utility, we currently buy our gas through Ron Magnum.
Ron Reagan.
Reagan. That's the name of the company. Either way, is there, is there anything that we could do to purchase our gas directly from Citizens in the meantime? Is there a process we would have to go through for that? Because the, the cost from Citizens is much lower than what we pay on the market. And I would like to find a way to save our Citizens' money on their, their heat bill now, before we get the, the sale finalized and approved.
Well, that's a real good question. I can make that inquiry. I don't know the answer to that, but I'll ask.
I know. I've spoken with gentlemen at Citizens Gas in the past, and they were open to it before the, the discussion of the sale ever came up. But we'd never, we never made it to the part or process of figuring out how that actually works.
Okay.
They, they are on the same pipeline system as us.
Yes.
Which makes it easy, in theory.
Okay, I'll ask. I don't, I don't know, but I'll ask. You have other questions?
Anyone else? Thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Now we've got Resolution 2025 dash zero seven to fix a Scribner's error in a local, in a local agreement with Pendleton on County Road 700 South for the right of way for it to be redone for a property that is getting a concrete plant on the Pendleton side. They are redoing both sides of the road at the developer's cost. Now, you want to have any questions on this?
This is just a simple, the, the name of the business that the deal is correct?
Yes, yes. We voted on this once already, and they had a Scribner's error.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash seven for this Scribner's error.
I second.
Brian?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move on to Resolution 2025 dash zero eight. This is a resolution to combine bank accounts. If you could explain this. You've explained it to me, but it'd be much better.
Yeah, no, that's no problem. After speaking with, as you guys all know, we have a separate banking account for, checking account for the Cascaden Fund, the redevelopment commission, and then our regular checking account. After speaking with the State Board of Accounts, after they've been here the last couple of months, that they recommended that we just combine all three of them. We keep, the, the funds are already kept separate in Keystone, and they don't have to be kept separate in separate checking accounts. I spoke to the DLGF yesterday. She said the same thing. The less checking accounts, the less chance you have a error. So in, with Cascaden, it would help a lot of things as far as having to do transfers, which you are about to see, with transfers and things like that. So that's basically all it is. Once, once you guys vote, if you vote that we can do that, then I will go ahead and, we're in the process of also switching to State Bank. So I will probably just go ahead and start off with the redevelopment and the Cascaden going into that bank. And then we'll move our main checking account for utilities. Once they open, they said probably April to early May, once they open their bank here in LaPelle, then we'll go ahead and put those in there as well.
So basically, on your end, Teresa, it's just basically adding a line item for you, right? In your Keystone. I mean, I know they're separate accounts, but it's just a, in the grand scheme of the budget, it's just a line. What I say a line item, like it's, like Parks 200 or whatever, it's
Doesn't have anything to do with that.
Okay.
It's our actual checking account. There's separate checking accounts for all three of them, plus there's a fifth account as well. What it's going to do is all three of those, those monies are all going to go into one checking account, but they're still separate and fun. It's still, it's nothing going to be created.
So our cost of banking fees is going to go down.
Yeah, well, we aren't going to have any with State Bank.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 20, 2025 dash eight to combine bank accounts.
Second.
Brian?
Hang on a few seconds. Okay, that's ordinance, never mind. Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
I would like to also make note that at seven
7:41.
7:41, that Gary Shuck had arrived.
Moving on to Resolution 2025 dash zero nine. This is the transfer resolution she just spoke of. Yes, please.
All right. When I received my 1782 notice, there, I had a note on there, even though we pay the park, the parks has ran out of Cascaden, and that's how we budgeted. I found out that you do still have to do the transfer from Cascaden to the Parks Department. Not just because the government says, yes, you can use that money for that, you still have to do the transfer. So it's the transfer for the money you guys budgeted for 2025 in order for us to get budgeted for 2026.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash zero.
I second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
I need to talk about this over here in the public hearing on this. Okay, the municipal wastewater rate increase. Dana spoke at a few meetings about this. We have a lot of stormwater inflow into our wastewater system. That causes several problems. It causes our daily rate to go up, which limits our capacity. We have looked into lining our sewer mains to alleviate some of the inflow of stormwater and groundwater into that system. That's what these water rate increases, wastewater rate increases are for, is for the lining process. And just to remind everyone that anything that happens in the utilities, as far as projects goes, is funded by ratepayers. So anything, and the wastewater is funded by the rate you pay in wastewater. Same thing with water, same thing with gas. Is anyone here having questions for you up in the public hearing? Okay, at this time, I will close the regular town council meeting and open a public hearing on the wastewater rate increases. Give us the information, please.
Thank you. Again, for the record, close Chrome with Chrome and Associates.
Welcome back.
Thank you. And the, the Indiana Code sets out the rate making formula for municipal utilities. We've been working with the town on this for at least six, six months or so. And at the last meeting, we, we did an overview of recommendations that we came up with. I think that you've made a solid plan. We're going to phase in over three different steps in nine-month intervals. A means of doing some design and engineering studies in the interim. It would be sufficient to, to do a, you know, about a $2 million bond issue. I don't, that may not be enough, but at least in the meantime, you're, you're building up some capital to, to phrase some of the total cost of the project by, by having a funding resource for the engineering studies that will be ongoing. And yeah, it's not uncommon, you're, you're not alone in the situation where you've got high infiltration and inflow. That's, I mean, any community that's had a wastewater utility for any lengthy period of time has I and I problems. And the tech, not the new technology is so much better than what it was 50 years ago. But sliplining is obviously a very popular means of addressing those issues to the extent that that works. Again, the, the Indiana Code sets out this formula where you need to, it says you shall finance, fund, rates shall be sufficient to fund cash operating expenses, working capital, debt service on bonds and other indebtedness, debt service reserve requirements, and then funds for depreciation and allowance for replacements and improvements. So that's the formula that's been utilized in, in our study. We use 2024 as our test year for purposes of coming up with the projections of cash operating expenses, our existing debt service, obviously, and then looking at these other requirements for working capital, debt payments coverage, and the allowance for replacements and improvements. Basically, the, we kind of focus on the 4,000 gallon customer. That seems to be the, the benchmark that the state uses for most of its grant programs and funding programs. But the way your rates are structured, you've, you've got, I would guess about 20% of your customers are minimum users, where they're using maybe less than 1,000 gallons of water a month. So I'm, I'm going to give you a few examples for the 4,000 gallon average that the state uses. We're looking at about $7.50 rate increase taking effect as soon as practical. It's going to take a while to reprogram the computers. And then phase two will kick in in July of next year. The, it would go up in about an additional $8.60 a month for a 4,000 gallon customer. And then in July of 2027, that's actually a 12-month interval there, it would go up another $6.70. So this provides significant capital to be, initiate these engineering studies without having to borrow money, you know, right now. We've done the same approach with the stormwater rates, although those are pretty nominal, even with the three phases we're talking about, less than a buck and a half a month increase over the three, three-phase increases. For the, for the 1,000 gallon months customer, which I think will capture most of your single elderly widow fixed income type customer, you really, right now, they're paying about $29.25 a month for 1,000 gallons. That's going to go up about $4.30 in the first phase, and then about an additional $5 in the second phase, and the final phase of about $3.50. So over the course of the three-step phase in, those customers would, would increase about $13 a month. Could be less if they use less than 1,000 gallons. You have a few meter customers, I think they're based on about 5,000 gallons a month. And then you have flat rates, I believe, in Fisherburg area and so forth. So then in a nutshell, on the last page of the handout, you'll see rate comparison with a number of other communities. In fact, generally, right before the meeting, In fact, Jimmy, right before the meeting asked, well, what's a good comparison for our community? We just finished a study up in Ashley, Indiana, where their rates had to go up to a hundred and eight dollars a month for an average customer. New Palestine has passed a couple steps, you know, different phase in rates there. They're they're going to end up at about a hundred thirty seven dollars a month. Sullivan, Indiana, a hundred and six dollars. Nashville, Indiana, about ninety five fifty and so on. Even with the third step phase in, you're sort of in the middle of the pack with with these rate comparisons. And I know it's easy for me to say, these are a good deal. They are, you know, if you've ever had problems with wastewater in your house, you pay whatever it takes to get rid of it, but you're you're not out on a limb here. And every community is going through the same wrestling with the same issues that that you all are. And so with that, that's a little groundwork for the public hearing and might be appropriate at this point. If there's any public comments or questions from from you all, I'd be glad to try to address those.
This being a public hearing, there is public comment. If anyone has anything they'd like to say.
Is our sewer combined?
You gotta go to the podium.
Pick them up.
Mary Davis, I just want to put it on record that we're talking about increases in our rates. And you guys have expressed multiple times, like if you have an issue with our water, to come to the town and ask the town instead of putting it on Facebook. And I did so when I got a positive result for coliform in my drinking water. And Trigis had followed up and said that she would get back with me. She never did, so I followed back, I followed up with her again in November. And I still have not heard anything from you guys. My water was yellow yesterday. So I mean, I have multiple pictures from last few weeks of my water being yellow. And again, I reached out with a positive coliform test in my water, which I don't, if you guys need to like read what that is, it's pretty gross to have in your drinking water. So I asked the town to follow up, even though I was in the process of having item follow up. And when I brought it to your attention, I feel like you guys should have responded to that. And now you guys are talking about increases in water rates, and we'll do anything to get rid of our wastewater, but I have wastewater in my drinking water. So thank you. You got a response?
I do, I have the I D M test right here.
Yeah. I wanted you guys to follow up. You said if I reached out to you, you guys would come out and look at it.
Go ahead. I'm sure you've got something to say here.
It's my property, I'm listening to what you guys are saying.
It's a public hearing, so.
The I D M test. This is a public hearing on wastewater rates.
Right. Right, and wastewater wastewater rates are affected by how much I use my my water. It's connected, it doesn't, they have to do with each other.
That's what your rates are based off of, is how much water you use.
Either way, I have coliform in my water, and I put it on record that you guys didn't respond to it. That's all I had to say tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Callahan Lappel. This is a public hearing.
For wastewater rate increase.
I'm not done.
Well, this is a public hearing for wastewater increase.
And I'm going to speak on that.
Okay.
So you have a room full of constituents. But none of your constituents, the people you work for, have a copy of what you guys are looking at. We don't have a PowerPoint up here for everybody to see. There's no handouts for the for the residents to have, but you all get to follow along, put notes on your papers. But the people who should have them are the residents. You all should be well versed in this. You should have been studying this. You should know this like the back of your hand. So why are these not provided to the taxpayers who pay your salary, pay for that paper, pay for all these people to come and present? So a public hearing, especially when you're talking about people's numbers, it's pretty hard to follow along unless we have something in front of us that we can mark down what we're doing. So maybe you guys should actually come here and serve the people.
Thank you.
Sean Johnson, are the sewers designed to rate like storm drain and sewer or is that?
No, they're they're not supposed to be. We have tried to, the smoke testing was to see if we had any gutters, yard drains, if there was a storm sewer that was missed that was dumping into a sewer wastewater main. We don't have those results back yet, but that is that was part of the.
Are they like running parallel, I guess, or?
They don't necessarily run parallel.
Or can, but they're like crisscross. They're designed to be separate.
Yes, they are designed to be separate. What is basically taken in on the roads is stormwater. What comes from your house is wastewater. Now then, back in nineteen ninety nine, we started a project to alleviate combined sewer system. There were some storm drains, and we went through an extensive project back in the two thousands, two thousand and one of separating the combined sewers. But we're still getting, when it rains and sometimes the other time, we're still getting inflow. What we're looking at doing here, just to answer that question, is no matter, we've looked at with the population projections that we have, that we're going to have an increase in population, which would necess would necessarily make us build a new wastewater treatment plant. So whether we're using the old plant, which we're using now, or we build a new plant, if we don't get rid of the infiltration, building a new plant is just wasting our time. So we've got to get rid of our infiltration first, and that's what this project is starting.
Sure. So I understand that because it's an expensive project, the idea is to raise the price of sewer. Once that's funded, will the rates go back down to some lower level? Like, is this a temporary thing to fund this project over whatever, however, years?
I'm actually not sure how that works, Dan, do you?
I think so, that's not how the model is. That's isn't.
I would hesitate to say that rates are going to come down from, because they're still, even with these increases, those are still pretty low rates. And obviously, the scope of the project that is developed over the next year or so that the engineers are doing their study will dictate, you know, the future as far as the I N I situation is. But building a new treatment plant will be expensive. Like, you know, you're probably looking at at least ten dollars per gallon per day for a for a new wastewater treatment plant. That could be, that could be a lot more, but what's the capacity of the current?
Capacity is four hundred thousand gallons a day. We're looking to increase that to at least double potentially, and you're looking at.
With the existing plant or the new plant?
The new plant. Well, we will use parts of the old plant. That project's thirty to forty million dollars.
Yeah. So we'll we'll be looking at grant opportunities or forgivable funding is the term that the State Revolving Fund uses.
So this increase isn't just for?
But if we had to finance eight million dollars, that would be, you know, considerably more.
The idea that the increase will also be used for like a new plant when that's necessary.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Will this rate increase, is this not just for that ingress issue, but also potentially like building another or bigger, better treatment facility?
This rate increase will not build a new treatment facility, but it will help fund the engineering studies necessary to figure out where the primary sources of infiltration and inflow come in and to try to mitigate as much as possible so that then the wastewater treatment plant can be right sized after you've mitigated the infiltration and inflow issues. But if you're at four hundred thousand gallons per day now, and presumably, you're going to be a growing community, which we've seen in most of the doughnut counties around Indianapolis, that eight hundred thousand, you know, doubling the size is probably, you know, a good first step. And they'll probably make a footprint that can be expanded beyond that. And then, as you grow your customer base, that helps. Those debt service payments are fixed costs. They don't, they don't go up. Operating costs go up with more customers, but the debt payments will remain flat. So the more customers you have, then the more you can spread those fixed bond payments over. So but I would hesitate to speculate that rates will come down at this point.
Sure, quick, we calculate the sewer cost based on the the water usage, right? Is is that like, what resolution, is that like five a gallon, or do they measure like per thousand gallons or?
Right now, the 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 flow, the volume rate right now is seven dollars.
Get a bigger chair and give it to him.
Seven dollars per thousand gallons.
I don't mean the cost, like, just how how accurately are we able to meter it roughly? Like by the gallon or ten gallons?
By the gallon.
Well, yeah, it's probably by the ten gallon. I would I would think the meters are probably in tens of gallons or, I don't know.
They're set where you add two zeros, like.
Okay, so they're in hundreds of gallons.
Yeah.
So what I'm getting at, why is Jack there the cost of wastewater? Like, if we can measure the consumption down to whatever, ten gallons, why not just set the rate and we pick what, you know?
Yeah, it it rolls over the next month, you know, if 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 you round up to the nearest hundred one month, then the next month that gets recaptured back. So it's not a.
Yeah, like, but we don't really need a bracket if we can just, we already know down to whatever, like ten gallons or a hundred gallons. Why not just bill it by that rate?
Well, they are billing in hundreds of gallons right now, so.
I thought you were saying there's like a thousand dollar or a thousand gallon minimum.
That's, well, the rate, the rate is set at seven, right now, seven dollars per thousand gallons. Everybody pays, there are no volume discounts for big users. They pay the same rate for every thousand gallons they contribute.
Okay, so that that four thousand gallon, that's just like.
That that's just an example, because four thousand gallons is what the state generally uses to qualify for potential grants or potentially the interest rate that would be assigned to a particular community. So that's sort of the benchmark, that's why we always focus on that. But if you're a minimum user and you use five hundred gallons, okay, for instance, instead of paying seven dollars, there's a base charge right now of twenty two, twenty five. If they use five hundred gallons, they only pay half of that seven dollar rate. They were paid three dollars and fifty cent would be the volume charge. So there are, there are two components, the base charge and the volume charge.
Thanks.
For the record, www.in.gov, both an individual's increase in water usage and a utility system general need to fund wastewater related infrastructure and operations contribute to increases in water and sewer rate. Has absolutely everything to do with my water, my drinking water. And I just also want to point out the fact that you took the time to bring the item report with you tonight. And it's been a month, but nobody from the town has bothered to reach back out to me to either of my follow ups to the town.
I got the.
Thank you.
Five minutes before the meeting started.
You're showing us, you're prepared to present.
A month later.
They were just done.
No, it was done, I reached out to you on in in October.
These are I D M tests, these are not town Lappel tests.
We know they're.
We know because you won't come test the water.
Go ahead, Nick.
Okay, my name is Nicole Caffey-Chenchi, and I'm here because I'm a concerned citizen. My mother died last year, November first, twenty twenty four. She contracted an incurable disease at the age of six from groundwater contamination in Anderson, half mile from our, we have a water plant that was added to the national priority list in two thousand eighteen. So I had no clue about all that until after she died, and so it kind of whooped, put me in a tailspin of learning about water and wastewater. So I, as you guys were sitting here talking, and I have covered this for a while, but are you guys familiar with the EPA website? That shows the detailed reports of everything going on with your wastewater treatment and your water plant? If not, I suggest that you look it up, because currently, it says that your wastewater plant is in violation. The violation has been identified and it's been there for several months. And it looks like E. coli, coliform, and all the things that people are concerned with. CWA report, when you pull it up, or the affluent chart, I should say, it talks about outfalls. So it says they're all contaminated, like all contaminants, and that's a major concern because something's going on with the water, because people have been complaining about it. Erin Brockovich got involved, she wrote a report about it. So it's not this, you guys, Chesterfield was popping nine hundred and thirty percent above action level and put it into White River, okay? I live upstream from from Chesterfield. My husband got sick in June from some type of whatever, and it was the grossest thing. I'm not going to go into detail about it, it was pretty gross. But anyway, he was sick, I didn't get sick, but it got somehow. I found that and it sent me on the southern tailspin. So I'm here because I'm concerned about the kids in the pill, I'm concerned about the environmental contaminants going on. And then, as I'm sitting here, you, and I know you said something about P. phospho and magnesiums. That magnesium, that concerns me, but you said it was the, I'm sorry, I know, I'm supposed to be focusing here. But is there a place where I can find that information? Like, do you guys have to test just like the Anderson Water Plant? And then do you put your reports online? Like, if I go to the website, I can find all that?
Well, it gets submitted to I D M and eventually gets into their website. I'm not sure if the town submits any of that online, that's up to the town, but it's required by I D M. They do the testing.
Okay.
And it's under limits.
No, I know you said that, but that concerns me, because like ours, and I am a Madison County resident. I'm going to run for office the next couple of years, so you might see me again. But I'm concerned about the condition of your guys' water, your wastewater. I'm not sure what's going on, I don't know if it's broken pipes in certain areas, it's infecting certain people more than others. But the fact that all the pictures are popping up, I'm kind of in the process of mapping some of them. And maybe later I can bring that to you guys, so that might help you guys figure out a location to why some people are getting affected and why some people aren't. So it's like you got like a twenty five percent rate of groundwater, and I know that Bree. I love her children. Her children are some of the most little precious babies I've gotten to come in contact with in the last couple of years. So if you guys could take care of that and try to help them with that water, I would greatly appreciate it, because if you have a sick child, you just, you don't want to watch them suffer for fifty years like I had to, or probably fifty, I said fifty, I'm forty seven. I had to watch my mom suffer for forty years. So just as a, you know, town leader, you know, when kids start getting sick, it just, you don't want that on their hands later. So I'm glad you guys are opening this up and talking about it and trying to fix the problems. And I look forward to watching the process and helping map, so you'll see me again in the next couple of months.
Yeah, I believe there are three other people ahead of you. Are you guys wanting to come up?
Most of them are wanting to stand because the chairs weren't comfortable, but go ahead.
If I.
I just want to know about the bond.
If I if I can say something before we move forward, part of this process is we have identified that our wastewater plant is is old, it needs to be updated. We are on the threshold, I don't know if that's the right word, to a requirement by I D M due to our capacity levels to be forced. I-DAM due to our capacity levels to be forced, if we don't take proactive action, to upgrade our plant, and, and that's what this process is. We, we identified a year ago that we need to take action. We have a massive amount of stormwater influx to our system, and, and everything that we are doing here is to start the process, to deal with those issues that have been found, and to, to start that process. As it was said, if, if we don't stop the influx, we would be building a new plant and it would have the same level of influx. So we have to fix the influx first, otherwise it's pointless to build a new plant, because we're just going to have a larger ability to process influx. So this is, this is, this is us being proactive. We're over a year into the process that got us to this meeting today. So.
I know, I think the last meeting, the meeting before, we had talked about like two developers would like to come in, like a hundred and twenty-five homes. The capacity that's almost double what we're talking about, are you going to be able to meet that capacity right there without building another, you know, tank for, or we need to back through to that? And the other thing, we're having a lot of problems right here, and Hampton County is growing out so much and so close here. I know when they built Hampton Town Center, it was Noblesville came in and did that, and because Fishers couldn't do that. Why can't we think about a partnership there? Or are we solar gas thing? Maybe sell our, sell the, go to Hampton County there. If they're already building, they got brand new structure coming out, especially over the development one over there, just a few miles down the road, why not think about that? And another thing, they're building new housing additions, shouldn't they have a connection fee? Should that keep our rates, you know, at least what they are, or maybe go down? That may, but also, I also know, and the government staff, when they put a tax on the act, they'll say it's going down, almost never does, but at least ways, they were stable. Or even, well, I'd like to kind of know also, what, what Hampton County is, how they are compared to where we are. I didn't realize this side over here is not developed as much, so even, even that, oh, Madison County, but Hampton County's got a brand new stuff right there, a couple of houses, so it'll be something happening. Yes. Oh, wait, and one other thing, you know, Gary and I had talked, and he said, at the school, he said the profit margin we make from the water is very minimal because of state standards. So that's another reason to kind of look into that right there. And really, if it's a big issue, it is a big issue, but, but it'd be easier going forward, but we've, we've got to off to put that into partnership, and that's where the campus responsibilities and form of roads and, unless they're there, so that's part of it too, because that runs beside and underneath the streets, so.
See, can I just make a comment there? One of the nuances in this new rate ordinance is a four thousand dollar per EDU or equivalent dwelling unit, system development charge. Every new house that is built that connects to our sewer system, and developers will have to pay that for every lot that they plant. And then we've also increased the tap-on fee also proportionally to the retail rate. So a new, a new sewer customer that wants to connect after this ordinance takes effect would pay about fifty-four hundred dollars per, per home or per household equivalent. So that is a nuance, and you're right on target, that we want new development to pay its way. Plus, they also put in all the sewers in these developments and extend the mains to the town, the, so the town, but, but we do have to have capacity at, at the plant, that four hundred thousand, what's, what's the dry weather flow at the plant?
Little over three hundred thousand.
So you're, you're at about seventy-five percent capacity on a dry weather activity, but.
Now, would it help, would it help us though, like I mentioned before, though, maybe Hampton County, put through the development area of Newark, put our, that connect here, or is getting, maybe the tanks are so expensive, build a partnership together? Or even, would it be best, best question, maybe think about selling, and then take a vote?
The, I mean, those, those are all, the one, the one advan, if you sell the utility, municipal utilities have certain advantages that investor-owned utilities don't. Number one is they're not-for-profit, they don't have to recover property taxes and income taxes on the fixed assets through the rates, and they're, they're not generating dividends for shareholders and things of that nature. They're, all the retained earnings of the utility stay within the town utility. So those are things that, you know, could be considered, but it's probably, I know in, in the Noblesville situation, I, I lived there, the wastewater treatment plant is way downtown on the White River there. They just built a, a bridge over it, so if you go over that bridge, you, you get a whiff of that whenever you drive over that bridge. But that's certainly something to look at, but the feasibility of transporting, you know, it might, and maybe the engineers here have a better feel for how, how much it costs per mile of main to put in.
Depends on size, but a good rule of thumb is about a million dollars a mile.
Yeah, a million dollars a mile.
And LaPelle's isolated, and there's not growth like right up to it. I mean, you're five, ten miles away from any other sewer system, so that's a, a long haul.
So when we get all this done, which may be five, ten years kind of thing, how long can we expect it to last in the long term? We're talking about a hundred, a hundred-year project, right? A hundred years was going to last with proper?
No, we design typically for a twenty-year lifespan, but we also design for it to be expandable, depending on growth. And so the growth that you have will pay for that expansion generally with what Buzz just mentioned on the impact fees, but twenty-year life on, on things like that. But they typically will last fifty to fifty years. I mean, we're not going, we're going to build this out of concrete, it's going to last a long time.
And the other thing, has Sonny Creek already combined together, or are we still on the talking stage?
They're, we're still on the talking stage. Now, there's a lot of public hearings that come along with that, and then it goes on the ballot for the public to vote on.
Okay, that's all. Now, Sonny Creek Township, do they have an meeting?
No, just not. I know they've had one, just to take a vote to agree to start into the process. They have not agreed to merge, it's agreed to start the process of looking at it.
Okay. Okay. And then, okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other quick piece of information, based on this gentleman's question, whether the town of LaPelle owns the wastewater utility or another entity owns it, it still has to have forty-plus million dollars of upgrades that ultimately the users will end up paying for. So just that, just that, even if we sold it so that a, a, a big mega corporation that can move faster than small-town government would take it over, it still has to have those same upgrades.
Okay. So who, like, this build-out's going to take, I think it's a forty million, if the rate increase is supposed to cover that over time, who's, who's like covering the costs in the meantime whilst they've paid off? Because, or is it a company that does the work today?
That's, that's what the rate is for, and then if we would finance it for a bond. So right now, this, this rate increase is only based on two, two million dollars of repairs and not the entire forty mil, forty million dollar project.
So would the work not start until we had saved up that two million dollars?
No, we would have to get financing for it, but we'd have to issue a bond.
Okay. Okay, so.
We haven't done anything with upgrading the sewer plant yet. This is to try to fix the inflow to increase our capacity with what we have right now.
And the bonds, what, I'm not familiar with, is that like a?
It's like a loan.
Yeah, it's like a loan.
It's how government takes out a loan.
Okay, that's the collateral.
The town can get a lower cost of capital than a private entity also, because the lowest rate right now offered by the state revolving fund is in the low two percent range where, you know, if a private company owned it, they would have two different, they would have a debt rate that's probably around six percent, I would guess, and then they would have an equity rate of return of ten or twelve percent. So the cost of capital under municipal ownership is a much better deal for the ratepayers.
So the, the state government is where, where the bond money comes from? Is it from a bank or what?
Well, there, there's a state revolving fund that offers low interest, below-market interest rate loan programs and the potential for some, what they, they call forgivable funding, which is the same as a grant, which hopefully, the, the illustration I gave earlier about Ashley, they got four million dollars of forgivable funding on a twelve million dollar project. So they only had to finance about eight million dollars of a, of a twelve million dollar project. It's possible, you know, if we score high enough on the SRS project priority list, that there could be forgivable funding on the table, but it just depends on, you know, what's available, what the time we're ready to do.
Would we like, maybe, then it gets forgiven halfway through the schedule, would we just stop? I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, I get like inflation or the cost of maintaining things goes up generally, but it seems like once we've paid for the work that needs to be done, then the rate should go down to whatever, whatever's necessary to maintain it until the next day? Or will it just accumulate in some final person major expense in the future? Like, is that?
Well, a new bond issue would probably last twenty to thirty years, so until, you know, hopefully, we don't need another project before the other bonds pay off, but the, it's a lot, once, once you make that commitment, you're committing those funds for a long period of time. But that's how everything is, is financed.
Right, but it won't take forever to pay it off, so then, it doesn't seem like we need to increase to last forever for this particular thing. I mean, if there's another project, then, you know, maybe we, rate goes down because we paid that off, but it's going to be the same because we got to pay for a new thing, it just, just doesn't seem like.
The, the problem is, we're, we have to try and engineer a project based on projected growth of the town, and once we do that, that is what they use for calculating, well, here's the average cost of the bond, here's the, there's all kinds of factors that go way beyond how long any of us are going to be here. You know, Gary, when was the last thing of the sewer plant?
Two thousand and seven, when we renovated the sewer plant.
And we're still paying for that.
I plan on being here in thirty years. I'm achieving, I do.
Well, if I keep taking care of myself, the rate I'm going. End of the meeting might be an issue.
You never know.
But, so it, it, it's a very hard thing to say that, that we, we would ever get to a point where the rate would go down. We would have to get to a point where we've, we've hit the maximum capacity of the town, maximum growth of the town. There's all these things that if you ever get to the point where, well, it's done, and there's no more financing, and there's no more growth, and there's no more anything, then the rate would be established at that time for what it is at that time. But anytime a rate is done, the study that these fine folks have done has to be done per state law to determine what the rate should be.
Okay.
We don't get to just make it up and, so here you go, here you rate.
Okay, and then with the, regarding like the documents from today, like, where do we find those? Like, where can we see?
They're on my computer.
Like, in general, are they on the town website?
For the public, I just kind of, I, I don't think people fully understand a bond, and so I, I wa, it's kind of like a credit card. So you're telling me we need a two million dollar bond to do this project, correct? Say we take this project, are you doing a twenty or thirty-year bond?
I would, I think the best financing terms are probably twenty years, but thirty years would help buy the rate down a little bit.
Okay, so what happens here is when you take a bond for two million dollars, and say, we're just going to say three percent, because he said that, you know, somewhere in the two, we're just do three percent to make it easy, that means that annually we would be paying about sixty thousand dollars. Over twenty years, that means the taxpayers would pay one point two million, over thirty, we would be paying about one point eight million. Now, while we're talking about the town of LaPelle, on Tuesday, the county wants a ten million dollar bond for the jail. So we are going to be on two different bonds, because we have to pay county and we have to pay the town. But people need to understand, these bonds are not cheap, and we will pay a lot of money in the end. It's just like a credit card, if you don't pay it off really quick, you're going to pay those interests. So please understand what these bonds do, and then if they take another one and another one, we just go further and further into debt. So I just want to be clear about the bonds for everybody to have a good understanding. It's called transparency.
One of the questions, I know we're going to do like twenty million dollar bonds, or two million dollar bonds rather, and how much, it would have another company else having drastic, we had to do, being a small town, say we needed ten million dollars from somebody else, are we going to be able to get that because of already invested bond we have? Or are we going to be waiting here?
Require a regular?
Yeah, in order to, in order to get fin, it, it, it's kind of like a mortgage, if you look at, if you want to relate it to that, and you have to have a minimum coverage ratio, meaning that your net revenues after paying all your cash operating expenses have to be at least a hundred twenty-five percent of your annual debt service payments. And on a two million dollar, twenty-year bond issue, it, it's probably going to be closer to over two hundred thousand dollars a year to pay that back. So now, once you make that step, then as you grow your customer base, the cost per customer will come down. But there's going to be, your, your comment on inflation was right on. I mean, inflation rates are coming down now, but, you know, after COVID, it just went through the roof, and I, I've never, not seen construction costs come down, they're maybe going up at a little lesser rate, but I haven't, I think they changed how they spelled the word steel when they use steel in the construction. They put, slipped an A in there somewhere, but. Good question, excellent questions.
Do we know, do we know how much stormwater or estimate how much stormwater is infiltrating? We went through a pretty dry spell there.
We know. We've got it.
It's a secret.
Is there a percentage in there?
It is not a secret.
We'll share with us.
I don't know the number off the top of my head, Catherine.
But you know.
I don't know it off the top of my head.
I don't even know.
But this is what the meeting was for tonight.
Well, just for instance, Catherine.
Yes.
During the tornado outbreak back in April.
Yes.
The infiltration from Fishersburg alone went from ten thousand gallons a day to eighty-five thousand gallons in one day.
Okay, so you know the history.
And you can relate that, that, that is also relatable.
Right.
To the rest of the town.
So what is today's?
Today? Today would be minimal. It, it, normally it runs about what?
Two to four times more than normal.
Right.
I mean, that's what he's asking.
Yes, it's a, I'd say you're probably, INI is probably double what the build flow is or more, because your annual.
So we're three hundred thousand on a storm, we're probably, what, three forty then, three fifty somewhere there?
No, you're looking at, so if your average day at Bri is three hundred thousand, you're looking at somewhere in the six to eight hundred thousand during a storm. Depends on the intensity of the storm, depends on a lot of different factors.
Right.
But we have all those figures, and it's all over the board, and it's not. But we have all those figures, and it's all over the board, and it's not unusual for this side of the town, not at all.
And just knowing the age of some of our infrastructure, is there a print that shows every single tie-in on to the city sewer?
We have, they have a lot of them.
We got a lot, but we don't have everything.
Roger and I have talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and I, I was just kind of curious on that, you know, knowing that the age here, you know.
Records 60 to 80 years ago, one is good as today. I would just say that.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure we don't have an idea of how many clay tiles are still on the system. Is that something that's, just when we go through this, that as we find a clay tile, either, hey, you need to replace this, because we could be having stormwater infiltration on that, or?
It'll be documented, yes. But right now, we don't know what, we don't, we just don't know.
As, as we find a clay tile, are we going to tell the homeowner, you got to get, you know, you got to pay to have this replaced, or?
Well, it's a good question. There are some towns that will line to the property, or to the property line, there are some that say that that's the town, that's the residence to the sewer line. I've seen it both ways.
Do we have any idea of how many sump pumps might be tied into?
I think that's a big number, actually.
We're hoping that when we get the results from the smoke testing that we did, that that will tell us a whole, a lot of the, where the tiles, the ladders are leaking, if there's some pumps tied into it, because it'll, it would have come up into the house. So we'll find a lot when we get that, the results of that, the smoke test back.
The average daily build flow is about 155,000 gallons per day, and our rated capacity's 400,000, but with peaking factors at 800,000. That difference is the INI, so, and it sounds horrible, but it's not abnormal what we see in other communities that have old sewer systems, so.
Well, I think it's good. My family's from Frankton, and those folks up there are paying an astronomical price now for their sewer system, and IDAM forced them, so at least we're getting ahead of it and getting an idea.
I always come here.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Somebody's asking, when will the results of the smoke test be released to the public?
I will probably get them in a couple of weeks, you know, I'll have a chance to look at them, and then I'll give them to you guys, and whenever you guys want to release them, it's up to you.
How long has we disseminated? Passed out.
I got that, I'm trying to formulate an answer for you. We can put them on the website.
Yeah.
Name for them on the website. We will put them on the website.
Excellent. Will that be before the end of the year?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Just looking at a timeline.
As soon as we have them, we will get them on the website.
Thank you.
There's no one else at this time, and we'll close the public hearing and resume the regular town council meeting.